That's good, that's nice.
I like that better.
That lighting is lovely.
Shows our better sides.
Are you ready on my left?
Jenna's not coming?
We are.
What?
Jenna's still there.
Oh yeah, Jenna's not here yet.
Oh, alright, so we'll start? Yeah. We'll start. Where's the flag?
I'd like to, oh where is the flag? Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Where's the flag?
Uh-oh. Somebody draw one quick.
Thank you, Mr. Rodwell.
Oh, it's around the corner.
Do a little march, have a little parade.
That would be cool.
It would be nice to walk around for a minute.
To pledge allegiance to the law.
You should have one as an emergency on the...
Nice. We're already rolling probably. Thank you, Mr. Rodwell. So now that we have a flag, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America. And to their government, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence? Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. We will go right into the approval of the minutes from the April tenth, two thousand and seventeen school committee meeting.
Move.
Second?
Come on, second it, any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, Dr. Oakley, can you give us an update on the academic and technology showcase?
Yes, I can. So we had the academic and technology showcase last Wednesday evening, which is our end of the year meeting that we have with school committee members and school improvement council members and anyone else that would like to come, parents and students. And what we like to do is celebrate our accomplishments for the year, talk about the goals, looking forward, and looking at some of the things that the kids are doing in class. So we had a lot of presentations of students and you can see up there there were a number of students that presented some really interesting things. I know all the way from kindergarten presenting the sock puppets app and I think that really impressed everyone and it was so cute, all the way up to watching the younger kids look at the high school kids that were playing the game with the robots that they made. You know, so I thought it was a great night. It's always a long evening because it's filled with so much information, but when you finish that evening, you look at it and say, wow, we really are doing a lot in the West Bridgewater Public Schools. So I think it's a great thing for us to continue and to keep doing. And it is so cute because all the kids that come and present, especially the little ones, they're all dressed up, they're excited because they're in front of it. And for a lot of them, it's the first time they're in front of a bunch of adults, you know, talking about things that they do in school. So they all did a great job and I'm really grateful that all the teachers came and I think the principals did a great job presenting their goals and accomplishments. So a number of you were there, so I don't know if you have any comments or, but it was, it was good.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I was, I was, as always, impressed just not only with the level of hard work that the kids, you know, do all year long and this is their showcase, but also just the daily work that the teachers do and these kids really responded to the teachers and the principals, you know, when the principals were speaking. You know, the kids were just looking at them and just listening and they just had their attention and their respect and it really, it was, it was a great night. It really was. It was great to see this kid's mature and just all their hard work. It's wonderful.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. Under business, school lunch prices.
And we can follow up that the dinner was also delicious.
Yes.
So again, I'm here, the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten. I'm sorry to have to bring this back to you guys again and again, but basically, the whole act is about not subsidizing our food program with what we get reimbursed with the free and reduced lunch prices. So the federal government is asking us to keep moving our target along with their target about reimbursements. So I'm here again, if you want to go to the next slide. The, what we should be at least charging is two dollars and eighty-six cents per meal. Right now, we're two fifty at the elementary, two seventy-five at the high school. We do not actually have to meet that goal, but we need to show that we're working to meet it. So if the next slide, if you wanted to show what the area lunches are right now. Again, for next year, we're proposing two seventy-five at the elementary and three dollars at the high school. And this is in line with the rest of the elementaries, I mean, the other surrounding towns. This is the, in the black is the FY seventeen prices and I know a lot of these districts are going back to their school committee to increase their prices again for next year. So we are still on the lower end and so I'm hoping that we could increase. And I know it seems like a big jump, but we try to do it every other year instead of every year. So two dollars and seventy-five for the elementary and three dollars for the high school.
So would this get us two years' worth of not having to increase taxes?
Yes.
Because this is more than the four point whatever percent basis.
Exactly. You read your memo, thank you. Correct. So that's what I'm proposing.
Okay, so can I get a motion to increase our elementary school lunch price? Oh, does it change our breakfast price?
No, it does not.
Okay, so to just change our lunch prices at elementary school to two seventy-five and our middle, senior high school to three dollars? Any, moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Alright, budget update. Oh, who forgot to do the budget update? Pick me?
I can do, I can do a little of it.
Alright, we were all...
The, we were asked by the finance committee and school committee to, I mean, selectmen, to cut our budget that we proposed or presented to the selectmen by thirty-four thousand dollars, which basically takes us from a four point two percent that we proposed to about a four percent. So in order to do that, we did eliminate a position in the business office. We had previously, in order to stay at four point two for the presentation, cut the elementary library position in half. And so this was, we had made a list of things that we would have to cut if we, or reduce if they came back with a, with a bigger cut or any cut. So we did eliminate that position to cover the thirty-four thousand. And we'll just, we're gonna have to absorb the duties of that position within the business office. Because I try when we have cuts like this to keep it away from direct services to kids as much as possible. So we start on the outside and go in towards anything that's in the classroom. So we tried to stay away from that. And so that will be the budget that goes forward to the town meeting on June twelfth. There's also a few capital items that the school committee will be presenting on June twelfth. One is that we put forward was paving, new paving for the Spring Street parking lot and the road that goes behind the Howard School that we tried to use at the beginning of the year for buses because we knew that that would speed up the whole route, but it was just more of a walkway and it chewed it up especially when they started plowing in there and stuff. So we put that in together and they'll be ripping that up and repaving that this summer. And the, the Spring Street. We als, we also put in for elementary furniture replacement because we basically have the high school set and a lot of the elementary school furniture is just mix and match and it's been around for a long, long time. So we need to look at that, so we put that in. And also an update, another article is an update for digital and library resources because, partly because of our NEES accreditation that's coming up and having the right volumes, right number of volumes for that. But more importantly, because when we built this building, you get a certain amount of FF and E money to get digital resources and books and those types of things for, for our new library media center. But it's not enough to cover what you would want to do. It covers basically the furniture and some of the hardwired things and computers and stuff like that, but not a lot of the resources. So we're going to be going for a capital item of that. So all three of those capital items have been approved by the selectmen and the finance committee. So now they go to town meeting on the twelfth and hopefully at the town meeting, they'll approve that so we can move ahead with those things. So it really comes down to hopefully getting everything approved at the town meeting so we can, can move ahead. But I was very happy, as we talked when we were presenting the budget, there were a lot of things that we didn't expect with some special education costs that, that came forward. And so I'm very happy that even with those in our budget, the town looked at it and said, well, you know, four point two percent increase is a bigger increase than you've asked for, for a while, but they understood why we had to do it. And in order to sustain what we do here for all of the kids, they, you know, only cut us a little bit. So again, and I say this every year, but the town has been very supportive of education over the years that I've been here and this shows again that they continue to be supportive of the town, so. And I know we did get called back for the budget and Mrs. Smith, you did an excellent job explaining it to them. And so when they voted, they kept what, what was originally proposed except for the thirty-four, so. So I think...
That's a large chunk of where our taxpayers' money goes.
Mm-hmm.
To our school system and some of the, you know, when we talk about the library too here and the things that we need for this library, we didn't put a lot of money into our library before we moved in anticipation of that. So some other people that may go into a new building from maybe not as old of a building as we went from might have had more to bring over.
Right, and we put everything on hold a couple of years, maybe three or four years before we moved because it was really hard to anticipate at that time what a twenty-first century in a brand-new building, library media center would be like and what types of resources there would be. So we didn't do anything for a long time anticipating coming over here, so.
And think about how much it's changed just in those eight years.
True. Since we've built it, think about what it's changed, so.
Exactly. It's changed a lot. Yeah, so that will be...
So go to the town meeting on June, June twelfth and pass our budget.
That would be great. Definitely have some good things on there. Great, um, the next item under business is the superintendent's evaluation. So each of us received tonight a packet that has the form that has the evaluation report that we each complete individually for Dr. Oakley. So on here, Kim, thank you so much for preparing this. She's put on here the goals with the specific, what are these called? Indicators in the description. So then we each evaluate her separately. And I wanted to propose if we could, if you, everyone could return these to me by the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which I believe is May thirty-first?
Thirtieth.
May thirtieth?
Mm-hmm.
If, okay, I'll give you till Wednesday then. May thirty-first. If they, if you could return them to me either however you want to get them to me. If you want to email them or, and deliver them. And then we also have to have a meeting to discuss our cumulative evaluation in preparation to present it to Dr. Oakley. And in, during our public meeting on June twelfth, we'll present your evaluation to you. But prior to that, we need to get together on June fifth, could we?
Could it Monday?
It's a Monday?
The Monday before.
The Monday before, June fifth, at six-thirty at the Spring Street School.
In the business office?
In the business office. So it is an open meeting to start, but we will go, we will also be going into executive session to discuss contracts that will then be presented in hopefully form on the twelfth.
Also in that packet that you all received is my self-assessment or self-evaluation. One of the pages is my goals and evidence of how I believe I met my goals. And then there's a big packet which is the superintendent's rubric with all the indicators and elements of principles of effective administrators that, from the state. And if you look on each page, the element that we, I was working towards is highlighted in yellow and below it on the bottom, I typed in the evidence in a narrative. And then if there's more evidence, I put in parentheses what the evidence is and it's stuck on the bottom of the packet, so.
See it, Jen?
Hopefully, it's very self-explanatory, but...
It is.
It only took me all weekend to do.
I know.
Just saying.
Just saying.
This was something.
It rained anyway, well, she does.
Fortunately for us, this isn't any one of our first year doing the evaluation for the superintendent, but it is, it is noteworthy that this is the same evaluation structure that's done for every teacher in our district and it is very thorough and they spend a lot of time preparing their evidence and going over their goals. But it has been proven that when you go back, just like we went back on the, the night last Wednesday night to look at what we achieved over the year, that it does, it makes you more productive and it shows things that are getting done, so.
Except teachers aren't public.
No, teachers aren't, no, we do not evaluate the teachers in public.
Superintendent has to be public.
Just saying again.
Just saying. So be nice.
And that was something that our finance committee asked us about, about how our superintendents evaluated, which was a great question. So it is done in public at our next school committee meeting. So do those deadlines in the next meeting work for everyone?
Yep.
Alright, so that's all we're gonna talk about.
And we can get that online too, so you can fill it out online, right?
Yeah.
An electronic copy?
Oh, I knew.
Send it to you electronically? Yeah, because she's actually put some stuff in there that's helped us out to make it even clearer. So if you could email it.
Yep, sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
She had to put it into a Word document though. It can't be a Google document, but that's fine.
Word's fine, right?
Word's easier.
There's a lot of great evidence against... Yeah, oh yeah, sorry, can we use your office on your office?
Yeah, tidy up for us.
Wipe off that table, please.
Just leave the table clear, that's all.
Alright, excellent. Okay, our next item of business is the discussion on possible exception to policy one thousand, the school committee. So this is the, a request that we had last school committee meeting and I asked you all to review the policy and come back this month to make a decision on what we want to do for the request that was put before us. So I believe everyone's had a chance to read our policy.
Yes, we did.
So any, does anyone want to make a motion or a comment?
I'd like to make a comment. So in the policy, the, the language states that former school committee members, it says, well, to quote, "In addition, past or present or past members of the school committee may hand the diploma to their child or grandchild." So what's been brought before us is an exception to that policy. I'm a bit mixed on it. Personally, I feel that, I know that it's been brought up for discussion at the last meeting that there's confusion or there's concern that this may cause what we call, let's say, a slippery slope. Personally, I don't see that happening. I just feel that if a former school committee member wants to hand their diploma, in this case, to their niece, that I would, I would vote that they should be allowed to do that because this is the first time, I've been on this committee for twelve years, I think now, and this is the first time that an exception has been raised. I don't think the rest of the committee, and I'm not gonna speak for them, but I feel that I'm in the minority on that, that the committee is, is feeling that the policy's there for a reason and the policy should be enforced. So that's, I just wanted to get that out there.
My, my feeling on it was, was the same with Sue, but I was more along the lines of the policy was created for a reason and it was created some fifteen or twenty years ago for specific reasons. And I don't feel comfortable just making it an exception where somebody else has gone out and made a policy. And I think if we do want to change the policy, we should be brought up for discussion between all of us and change the policy. But at this point, I think we, me personally, if somebody went out of their way to create a policy for this that I don't have, personally cannot go above what they've decided, what someone on this committee has already done. So that, that's just my personal feeling that I don't want to go above somebody else going out, making such a, you know, a policy for some reason and just to change it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Bill. I, I think it's a great, a lovely gesture on the person's part, but I feel like it's not in the best, it's not in our best interest to have an exception to the policy because then it could open the door for someone else to ask for an exception and so on and so forth. And I, I feel like if we're gonna have the authority to make exceptions, then we have policies. I mean, so I am torn too, because like I said, I think it's a lovely gesture. But I feel like we have to adhere to the policy as it stands unless we opened it up to redo it.
Well, I, I agree with both, both of you on the policy exists for a reason. I believe if we're gonna do anything with the policy, we do it when the time comes, which I believe is in possibly two years. So until then, I believe also that most of us will still be here, if not all of us, and we can discuss it at length, excuse me, at length at that time. I am very nervous about making one exception this year which could have a domino effect in the near future to possible several exceptions, if not twenty. And I really don't want to start making the evening longer than it needs to be. This is our one night as a school committee that we get to do something that's enjoyable and say goodbye to the seniors. In some cases, we've been here as long as the seniors have been in the school system. Not all of us, but pretty close, so I think we should leave well enough alone.
So I, we'll have to say, this wasn't something that we, and I personally didn't just put a little bit of thought into, we put a lot of thought into it because it is a special occasion, we understand how special it is. I also understand that it's something that you guys have put a lot of thought into, that it wasn't something that you just thought of and said, hey, let's do this. You thought many years ago, it was something that was going to happen. Unfortunately, it is something that the policy doesn't state could have happened for your nephew or for your nieces. And I did, it, it's really, you know, something that obviously we all think is a great honor because we all would like to, you know, hand our children and if we get the opportunity, our grandchildren their diplomas. And I know you were able to give your own child their diploma and know you understand how special it is. So, but we, we, at this time, do feel like we want to follow our policy and not open the policy up to be changed. So I, I really, I, I don't want to apologize that we're gonna follow our policies because that's really our job. I will say though, this was one of the harder decisions that we've had to make, I personally have had to make being on the school committee, so. And I really hope it doesn't take away from this wonderful day because it is a wonderful day and there is so much honor in being a West Bridgewater grad and having your other family members graduate from West Bridgewater. And, you know, it just goes to show how great our community is, that there are people that have been on our school committee, that still have family members that are going through our system today. So it really, it's, it's a special day and we're gonna stick with our policy as it's written today. Alright, so we have, our next order of business is assignment of policies. So then policy seventy-five hundred, the school property use. I understand that Bill and Jim would like to, Mr. Flynn and Mr. Holden would like to continue to work on this policy now that we've had some time to be in the new building and bring that to us. Will, we be ready for June for that one? Do you want to sign it to June?
It's gonna be a little tight if not August.
Okay, alright.
We have, we have till August, yeah.
Okay, great.
It's basically, it'll cover everything till then.
Right. I do think, well, I do think this policy is very important and now that we have some time in the building. So if we put that on the August agenda, that would be great. So approval of policies from last month. So policy fifty-five ninety, the library media, Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes, just to continue the thought process that was brought up earlier with respect to the library resources and so forth. We're going to table the policy until before school starts, sometime over the summer.
Yep.
Just to give the administration a chance to just kind of get all our ducks in a row on that.
We're gonna be getting a lot more digital resources, so it could change some of the things in the policy. Well, we hope.
We hope, right. As long as that passes on June twelfth, then that would be, then that could definitely impact that policy. Policy seventy-eight hundred, I've never been so excited about a homeless student's policy.
Me too! We're finally ready!
A lot of hard work was put into this.
There was, there was. I really do have to give a shout out, not that he'll probably ever hear this, but to attorney Michael Santos, who's actually from Washington DC, from Project Learn. He was very helpful in not only approving or telling me that the flyer that we have in the lobby of each school and at the superintendent's office as well over at Spring Street, for homelessness facts, like a fact answer a question type. And then it also gives the district liaisons contact info, which is Mrs. Christine Page. He said that that was a great resource for parents and families and guardians to get started if they feel that they are under that umbrella of homelessness. So we also made, Mrs. Page and I made some other changes that are in red. A lot of it was just kind of updating it by way of language. Instead of, for example, Head Start, we expanded it to early intervention and English language learners and so forth. And we just essentially made sure that it wasn't very repetitive, which there was a couple of provisions that were repetitive. So I'd like to make a motion to accept finally the homeless, homeless policy as presented.
Second?
Second it. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience.
Policy seventy-six hundred, the green cleaning policy, which this is a new policy of ours. So we created a new policy that is in line with the, so Dr. Oakley and...
Mass chips.
Yep, it's in line with mass chips, which gets us, got us...
I think two.
More money, basically, for building the new school so that we're in line with...
Green.
Going green and staying, staying healthy to ourselves and our environment. And Mrs. Hamlin also worked on this with us and it is in line with what we need for, to be in compliance. And also has, the policy itself is pretty straightforward, but it's under the requirements, it had to state the purpose, the training, and then it also had to have the best practices and policies and that's, that basically looks like the manual for the staff that are... So I agree. Would like to make a motion to approve the policy seventy-six hundred, our green cleaning policy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so that's all our business. So our warrants, I'd like, for the first one, we'll do a roll call vote for warrant forty-seven A, dated May eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, for five hundred sixty-six, three hundred and one, five hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred and one dollars and fifty-four cents. So, Donna?
Moved.
Moved, sorry, moved and, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, and roll call.
Aye, yes.
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 Okay, so four guesses and one abstain. And then for, I mean, recused, excuse me.
I couldn't think of it. I have to write it down.
I could write it down.
That's okay, there's many more. So we're gonna do the next three together, so I'll read them together. Warrant 47B dated May 18th, $26,660.78. Warrant 47C dated May 18th, $71,798, so $190.27. Warrant 47D from May 18th, 2017, $1,056.96. Can I get a motion to approv, approve those three warrants?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, it's now time for a public forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Do I have any takers to address? No. All right, seeing, anyone watching at home could email us. All right, and so now let's go over our. So on May 29th is Memorial Day and there'll be no school. On May 31st, it's a half day for all schools in service for teachers. At the middle senior high school, on May 15th is Senior Safety Day, which was today with a parade and the cookout. Everything go well?
Very well.
Excellent, oh good. A great way to say farewell. On, um, May 16th, Mr. WB viewing party from 6 to 9 PM. May 17th, the drama club banquet from 6 to 8:30. May 19th, the middle school dance from 7 to 9. I thought it was 6:30, but, no?
The May show, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, May 22nd to 26th, graduation practice all week, they're gonna be really good at it. May 22nd, the music boosters banquet from 6:30, 6 to 8:30, excuse me. May 23rd, the senior reception at Stoneford Restaurant in Rainham from 7 to 10. May 24th, the senior scholarship awards night from 6 to 9. May 26th, the graduation ceremony at 6 PM, weather permitting, but so far in Town Park, great, warm memorial. Um, May 30th, the language cooking up culture field trip. And also on May 30th, the athletic awards banquet from 6 to 8:30. At the Howard School on May 15th, the MCAS, math MCAS preps prep. On May 16th, sixth grade archery demonstration. May 17th, the math, math MCAS prep and Howard art show. Oh, that's a good name. Get some math and stay for some art. On May 18th to the 26th, will be MCAS testing at the Howard School. May 23rd, the sixth grade math Olympics. May 24th, fourth grade field trip to the Harvard Museum. On May 30th, the DARE graduation. On May 31st, the in-school spring concert. On June 1st and 2nd, the pride assembly and grade four math makers program. On June 6th, volunteer breakfast. June 7th, grade three will visit the, um, the Howard School. And on June 8th, grade four field day and grade five field trip to the museum of science. On June 9th, grade four field day rain date and grade six visits the middle senior high school. On June 12th, grade four Miss Winter Ice Cream Day.
Can I just ask a question, Mrs. Spencer? On, um, May 31st, the in-school spring concert, the.
It's also.
Evening one, that's what I thought.
Oh, okay. So on May 31st, the Wednesday, is the evening concert and the art show, no?
No, the art show is this week.
Oh, okay.
They broke it out this year.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
Because the spring concert is now. Yes.
Oh, it's over here?
Yes.
Very nice. Okay, so will someone say those dates again because I messed it up?
So the art show is this Wednesday.
May 7.
May 17th and then the, both the in-school spring concert at Howard is May 31st and the evening concert for Howard here.
On the same day?
On the same day, yes.
Okay.
At 7?
6.
6?
6.
Come at 6:30. Please, come at 6.
The kids for the dance will be here maybe, I don't know. I'm confused, I'm kidding.
All right, I'm gonna go for it. So Rose L. McDonald, May 17th, the grade three MCAS and also on the 18th. And May 19th, kite day, grade two parents are invited, kite kits funded by the PTO. On June 1st, the grade one field trip to the Southwick Zoo. On June 2nd, grade two is going to the Keith House, walking to the West Bridgewater historical tour. That's fun. On June 7th, the grade three is going to visit the Howard School. On June 8th, grade three, the United Skates of America field trip. On June 9th, the grade two is going to Fenway Park. On June 9th, also grade one has a sing-along and the parents are invited and the show begins at approximately 9:30. On June 9th, we're also doing grade one backyard field day begins from noon to 2:45 with a rain date of June 12th. And that's the rain date. Oh, Spring Street, I apologize. We're gonna do, May 22nd, the pride assembly at 9 AM. May 31st, the Q and U wedding. That is awesome.
The event, the event of the season.
Yes.
If you're not invited, you're missing the event of the season.
I don't know what to wear, so. That is.
It is so cute.
That is awesome. On June 1st, the school choice kindergarten screening. Uh, so on June 1st, the kindergarten's going to Buttonwood Park. On June 1st, Mrs. Maddos, two-day-a-week pre-kindergarten end-of-the-year celebration at 1. On June 2nd, Mrs. Maddos's three-day pre-kindergarten week at school, end-of-year celebration at 10 o'clock and 1 o'clock. On June 6th, the kindergarten's going to visit the Rose L. McDonald School at 9. On June 9th, Mrs. Lebrex's pre-K end-of-year celebration at 10 AM and 1 PM. And on June 13th, the kindergarten end-of-year celebration at the middle senior high school at 1 PM. And June 14th, the kindergarten fun day.
They have it here.
Yeah, I remember the, I remember the video from last year, that was fabulous.
Yeah, that was awesome. The Flag Day celebration.
Yeah, and the song.
It's right on the website, like one of those still pictures. That's just how cute.
Yeah, it's fun to see them from little to taller. So our next meeting that, of the regular school committee is going to be on June 12th, but we'll also have a special meeting on June 5th that's, um, that hasn't been posted yet.
And it's a 6 o'clock meeting, right?
Oh, yeah, 6 o'clock.
The town meeting is at 7?
6:30.
Town meeting's at 7.
Town meeting's at 7. On the 12th.
Yeah, so 6 o'clock here, town meeting at 7.
Town meeting at 7.
I gotta update that right now.
Pack of lunch.
Yeah.
I know, we have three articles, so we'll be, we could be there for a while depending on where they fall in the lineup.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Tell them we'll bring them snacks too if they want. All right, can I get a mo, or, or, any other business, or?
No.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, have a great night.
Thanks, all you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So 6 o'clock.